All right, at six thirty, we're ready to start.
Ah, but the United States of America, and the United Republic of which is saying one issue of their God, and the invisible, with their being justice for all.
On the United States of America, I believe the city of Texas, one state, and their God, one and indivisible.
Eric, come on in.
Yeah, I was good too. Uh, it's power has been what I just think for tonight, thank you for bringing us here together. Um, I just pray that you just give us the wisdom to make wise decisions and have the best interest for coming along with the citizens of the community. Um, just thank for the weather and uh, just pray that you continue to watch over God and protect everyone in our community. Christ's name, pray, amen.
Roll call.
Oh, um, I will call roll at this time, um, Mayor Corey Glasser.
President.
Eric Stevens.
I'm here.
Uh, Colby Caper.
Here.
Will Rutledge.
Here.
Brad Snowy.
Here.
Charles Cardrow, here. Brett Hale.
Here.
And Secretary Al Sander, I'm here, and uh, Kim Williams' accent.
Brings to them four.
We do not have any citizens, uh, comments to.
Going on to number five, items of community interest.
Uh, yeah, why don't I let you go first?
Right, September twenty twenty road count, EMT, we had seven calls, fire four, two were structured, which is very unusual. MBA three, and hazmat one, water rescue one. So we checked all the boxes for September. Uh, we were awarded a fifteen thousand dollar TFS grant for PVE, which is awesome, because that's going to go up very long ways. Uh, the ten thousand dollar hazmat grant we put in for, we did not get, there was a hundred and thirty three applicants for two awards, so they didn't. We didn't get to sit that. Uh, I think I already talked about this on brand again, just in case, we did get a seven thousand dollar PPE grant from Wichita Falls Air Community Foundation. So that'll all go towards new bunker gear, greens and yellows for wildland, and we'll get some of that lightweight dual purpose gear for summertime. Uh, car rigs, and we'll put a big case of.
Move on.
Thank you, John Strickson.
Um, updating from City Manager, this week. Uh, quite a few things, one, first and foremost, uh, all forty-two fire hazards in Lake Side City and at the surrounding, uh, outside Bowman have been tested. Uh, we documented it, got it all done, taken care of, so that was a, uh, good thing that we, uh, have done. Send Kevin, kudos to them, and we had a couple days pass, I feel the first, but we still got it done. Um, another thing, I know a few months ago, uh, a gentleman came to us about opening up the bathroom doors, and we got a list of, uh, citizens. There was thirty-three citizens on that list, um, we sent out letters to all thirty-three of those citizens, um, and a few of them, once they received the letter, called back and was sort of questioning what it was for. We did a, a few follow-ups on it, some of those people on that list never said that they, name could be used, or even knew that their name was being used. Um, so with that, I would just say, my recommendation is in town now, from this point forward, anytime we have citizens turn in a list of names, we do signatures on it. And just make sure it's legit, and just a, a list of names. Um, other things, uh, I know we talked about, we put in for the grant for the, um, generator for the new building. Unfortunately, they sent a letter back and it said, um, the DR forty-four sixteen was, FEMA declared that the, that was the disaster number for Texas severe storms and flooding. It was not selected for immediate funding, but may be, uh, selected for further consideration in the event that the DR forty-four sixteen funds become available. And then it's, uh, we're encouraged to submit this application under future hazard mitigation grant programs. And then they also have a new thing called building resilient infrastructure in communities, and so they said, try submitting under there. Um, once talking to, uh, Mr. Patrick, he said, the main reason there was hardly anything that got really approved, just because COVID sort of sucked all those other things dry, and all the monies went to that. And so we're going to continue to keep working on it, and, uh, try to get that taken care of. Um, later this week, everybody will be getting a letter, all residents will be getting a letter in the mail, and it's just explaining our five dollar increase on the sewer, uh, fees, and then the, um, increase on the trash fees. We're going to give that out to the citizens so they understood, um, where, where that was coming from. Um, a couple other things, I know, uh, a hot topic going on right now is the Bowman and Shoreline intersection. Um, I've reached out to both County Commissioner Richard Shelley and then, uh, Zach Houston, the Tech Dot area engineer for us. Um, uh, Mr. Shelley was in total support, whatever we want to do, that's in our set, inside our city, so we can do it. Tech Stop was in total support, whatever we want to do, but I asked them to go ahead, um, they will do a traffic study on it, and they come back with, uh, their opinion or recommendation. Uh, just looking at it, um, very briefly, Zach's thoughts were, during heavy traffic, what that's going to cause is all those coming westbound, coming in, say five p.m., everybody's coming home, that's going to cause a backup, but they don't want to cause any kind of more accidents, rearing collisions, everybody coming off seventy-nine, pretty hot and heavy. Um, and then two, uh, the traffic study will tell, uh, a whole lot more, how many people come in, more than eighty-five percent of the people come in and are turning right, will probably keep it just like it is. Um, but that's their recommendation, we still can do whatever we want, um, but I would strongly suggest, let's wait and see what, now, this is not going to be something they get back to us overnight, uh, but it is on their list, and he's going to, uh, get back with this, it's their recommendation and their, what they find out.
Can we explain the issues going on, what the concern is there?
Yeah, a lot of it is, people are coming off that free ride turn southbound on, uh, seventy-nine, and they hit Bowman westbound, and it's not a sharp enough turn for your blinker to go off. And so a lot of people sitting there, coming southbound out of, uh, Shoreline, see people with their blinker, thinking they're going to turn right, and so they pull out in front of them, and some of those people are going straight, so there's T-bone collisions and stuff, and there has been, uh, a few, and they'll do an accident study on all that and everything too. And then we just added our private drive coming out of there, um, there will be a stop sign there, and then there also will be signs on the right-hand side of our private drive that say, private drive, no food traffic. Um, that's one of those things, um, I'm sure law enforcement will be enforcing that and stuff. And so, um, what I asked them, the reason why the eastbound Bowman has a, uh, stop sign, that was one of those things, very little traffic comes out of there, more traffic comes out of southbound, um, Shoreline, and so they thought it'd be easier to go ahead and stop that, and allow more people to come out there, and they just wait for it. Um, they have a rhyme or reason behind everything, and so, um, it's very good. Um, that's on that intersection, uh, he did tell me when I was talking to him today, I know the concern was, we've always had, uh, Bowman and seventy-nine. That's a, a one-way, uh, one lane out, and they're still trying to make it a two-lane out, um, where when you're coming off of Bowman, you either can make a left-hand turn or a right-hand turn, and there's a lane for each of them. They got a couple projects that are going to let later this year, and hopefully they can wrap that all up when they're, one of the big ones is they want to widen all the way from professional drive all the way to, um, nineteen fifty-four, and make it a, a complete turn lane the whole way through there, and so hopefully with that, funding for that, it's nothing going to happen overnight.
In town past, we had, um, lines, when you would leave Lake Side, there were lines all the way up to the intersection, so you could choose left or right.
Mm-hmm.
But who, is that a Tech Stop thing?
Tech Stop does that, because it enters onto their highway, so they have to approve it, now, they said if we wanted to do it.
Two cars fit there if you make lines.
Yeah, then they go back to it, because the new wall, there's apparently not wide enough now for it, and so I sort of just looked it up then, now, he said if we wanted to fund the, them coming in and cut, you know, the little triangles up there, they would cut that out, make that thing wider, and then they would give us two lanes, and they said if we wanted to fund it ourselves, they would do the work if we funded it. I sort of said, no, that, that wasn't a priority right now, that if we wanted to, we could look at it at a later date. Um, so, yeah, that's where they're at on there. Um, only other thing I got is, uh, September's inspections have started, almost always starting doing those, um, I think he's got about seven of them completed already, um, and very good positive feedback, everybody, so far, it's been good, cooperative, uh, positive feedback, I'm glad, um, we're going to story on one of it. One of the ones we went to, had no clue, um, where his septic tank was, and he knew he had one, they just hadn't had a pump since nineteen eighty-three, but it was only because he didn't know, know where it was or anything, and so, uh, they were very happy when he come out and took care of it and stuff like that, so good pa- positive feedback on that. Um, other than that, that's all I have for City Manager, I think.
So what does phone put in that, um, Shoreline Bowman Road until we get studies back?
I, I would definitely recommend that, I think, coming back Tech Dot, little traffic engineer, you know, that's what they specialize in, with them, come back and give us off their recommendation, and we can either choose to accept it or go our own way.
If nothing else, we'll move on to number six, consent agenda, I entertain a motion when it's ready.
Wait a minute, we, uh, tip that, presented.
Mr. Brothers makes the motion, is Eric second.
Second.
Somebody second, sit, during discussion between council, all of the bearers say aye.
Aye.
Both say no. Question passes, brings us to our agenda, number seven, seven A, discussion and consideration on COVID nineteen status updates in city protocols.
Uh, yeah, a little slipped up, this is really not on city protocols or anything status, but, um, we apply for the coronavirus relief fund, um, and per capita, there's a lot, there's a thousand ninety-four, what our population is, I give this fifty-five dollars per person, so that's a total of sixty thousand one hundred and seventy dollars, um, and we apply for it, we've got the initial, um, twenty percent upfront, which is twelve thousand five hundred and four dollars. Um, it's one of those things, I have to submit paperwork, so any kind of, uh, expense that we had, um, whether it be disinfectant wipes, um, stuff the guys had to do to clean, anything like that, that's all a FEMA thing. Now, the timeline is, uh, November the thirteenth, you have to have your plan of spending in, and then December the fifteenth is when all your stuff has to be in, and it covers anything from March the first to December the thirtieth. Um, and so we're eligible to sixty thousand one hundred and seventy dollars, there's some stuff in there where we can, um, assist and, uh, give money back to the fire department for expenses they had, uh, to, here, and so we're exhausting all of that, because it's there, it's one of those things, if we don't use it, it goes back to them. So, um, we've been on several meetings and meetings, and so that's all going well, but that's all the updates, fun ones I have for that.
Um, I have been in contact with judge, with the judge, and we, I think we talked last week, and gave updates there, uh, nothing really, we just, we really aren't going to know how many people in Lake Side City are going to be expressed positive or negative, uh, they will not at least send information to us, so, uh, first phones will have that information if they go to a house that has been deemed, um, a positive case there, so that's all we'll know. Um, just clarification on the sixty thousand dollars on the coronavirus relief fund that has to be spent in the city, cannot be transferred to the school district or an ITAC, correct?
Yeah, they're going back and forth with that, and they got a legal team now looking into that, there are things we can do for holiday ISB, but they're very limited, and we're trying to see how we can help, because we do have money, we would like to help them, but it's just, we got to have, there was FEMA's, uh, or Texas Department of Emergency Management, so.
But the initial at this time is.
Right.
We cannot, yeah, but we have to go through the process.
Yes.
Do they reimburse salary time from, as we show, how much time was spent opening and closing the park and so forth?
Yes, stuff like that, as long as it's coronavirus related, um, none of our employees are deemed to be public health official or anything like that, so their salary is not now any labor costs that we had in there, it's, uh, you know, like when we shut the park down and made all the signs and all that, that labor's covered, anytime they cleaned stuff, anything like that, that labor's covered, as long as it was coronavirus related, um.
Pulling the goffsy's up.
Yeah.
Setting, pulling, bringing it together, barricading.
So then, I'll, I'll, let's get it done.
Corey, you said that, that they won't notify you of someone in Lake Side City if they have corona?
Correct.
Um, so the first responders, is there any alert that comes up, like?
Only when they get dispatched to that house.
Okay, so you'll know when you go to the house?
They'll know.
Right.
They will, they will tell us only that where your PPE has been, they will say that you're.
I was just curious on that, if there was any alert.
It's just pretty much for the tip of our eyes, and it's just protect the tip of laws, so just if first one we're called out, they'll be.
Like a caution indicator?
Even on our rubber court, when I can put it down about corona, it just, it was very vague and plain.
Any other questions about the COVID nineteen? Okay, if not, we'll go to seven B, discussion, consider, consideration on resolution twenty dash zero three, adopting official city newspaper.
Yes, this is something we do at the beginning of a very fiscal year, council's required to designate by ordinance, or resolution, official newspaper in the city, public source, and public hearings, uh, other required information, we've done this every year now, um, so all you, all we need is just, as always, there's only one paper in Archer County, so if we always designate Archer County news as that.
I'm attending motion.
Make a motion to designate Archer County news as the newspaper for City of Lake Side City.
Mr. Guy makes the motion, is Eric second.
I'm second.
Scarborough second, sit, discussion between council, all of the bearers say aye.
Aye.
Both say no. Motion passes, brings us to seven C, discussion and consideration on the parade route of cop hearts on coming in.
Um, yes, so we've been doing this for a couple years now, um, all this does is, when we deem it a parade route, all those golf carts that are not technically registered, um, with the county or anything can still do it, um, it's, we've always had a good response, uh, we haven't had any problems with it, so, um.
Lots in the pool trailers and stuff like that.
Yeah.
Just work, as long as it's parade route.
Yeah.
You need a motion just to.
I just need you to declare that, like I said, city is parade route.
I'll declare that for all streets in Lake Side City, uh, for ten thirty-one twenty twenty, do we need a, that hour, Connor? Just take them.
I was just.
Four p.m. to midnight?
Yeah. Dark, yeah.
And you'll make sure the sheriff gets a copy of that?
Yes, sir.
Brings to seven D, discussion and consideration on approval of payments to contractor in the company for the percentage of work completed and stored today's fees, it's in the thirty of twenty twenty in the amount of ninety-five thousand thirty-five dollars.
Yeah, the building's coming real close to being done, and, um, everybody that's driven by there loved it, uh, people from outside the community, who've said a lot of things to us, and, uh, I think it looks great, I think it's, if you go inside, it's really, just see the new council chambers, and the way they're going to look, the kitchen, uh, they got some of the cabinets hung and stuff, so it's coming along real good. Um, kudos to the fire department, they're doing a lot of their stuff, and getting that done, um, so you can see, actually, this payment that will, is going to leave us one hundred and sixty-three thousand point fifty-nine of our one point two five, um, guaranteed maximum price, um, and so they're thinking into this month, in the, in the November, mid-November to the end of November, we should, they should be handing us the keys to it, um, then we have a lot of other stuff, you know, moving furniture and stuff like that. So I would, I, I see us being in there, um, first of the year, and I really see us, we got the holidays coming up, Thanksgiving that's going to come up, and you got Christmas and stuff like that, so, um, I can see us starting first of the year, and they're having a grand opening, a ceremony like that, for, we're.
Is there a motion to approve the same as any of them?
I'll make a motion to approve the ninety-five thousand three hundred and five dollars for that.
Senator makes the motion, is Eric second.
Second.
Mr. Guy for seconds, sit, discussion between council, all of the bearers say aye.
Aye.
The post say no. Motion passes, brings us to seven E, discussion and consideration on resolution twenty dash zero four, uh, to the Lake Side City's support for some false actions in pursuit of Lake Ringel as a valid water resource per Seawest Falls request.
Yes, so on September the twenty-second, I received a letter from, uh, Mr. Daniel Dexter, Utility Operations Manager, and Russell Schaller was also carbon copied on it, um, and this is just, as the City of Wichita Falls continues to make positive progress with the regulatory agencies, preventing the sole, preventing the reservoir for our region, Lake Ringel, um, they have asked us in order to demonstrate to the state of Texas that there's overwhelming support for the development of Lake Ringel. The City of Wichita Falls is requesting that our governing body adopt the attached resolution, um, at, at this council meeting to demonstrate our organization's support for the city's action concerning the new about a water source. Um, this is something y'all can discuss, it's not a must, um, it's just a request that they are asking, um, I know it's sort of a sensitive subject over there in Wichita Falls right now, um, but we do purchase our water, and they are our water supplier for us, um, so how y'all want to proceed, uh, with this, is y'all's choice and your decision. If y'all have any questions, I'll be glad to take them, and then I'll reach out to Daniel and Russell, and see if I can get an answer from them.
I mean, what's the benefit for us?
Uh, really, there's no benefit, um, you know?
I mean, with them getting Lake Ringel, they're going to lower our water?
No.
Exactly.
No, I don't think it's going to lower our water, I think they're just, you know, since we're a wholesale customer till they're trying to get support or anything else like that. I've reached out to a few other cities, a few have turned back, other ones, no.
Really and truly, right now, all they're doing is laying the groundwork for the future.
You're exactly right.
I mean, this thing's still twenty years out.
Yes.
We're just, all we're saying is, we support them laying the groundwork.
You're right, correct.
I mean, you got to start somewhere, it's a twenty-year project. I know it's a tough subject, and I'm not sure I'm on a hundred percent board with it, but it ain't going to hurt us to do it.
Um, but my concern or frustrations is that we've asked the City of Wichita Falls to help us out on a couple instances, the, the court system, uh, and not that this is really helping us out or helping them out, but it's, you know, we want, we want to be good neighbors, uh, but, but, you know, I mean, there's got to be benefits worth it, you've got to, there's got to be a two-way conversation, not just because of the big city that y'all have to get, you know, that, that's just my concern, is that we've asked for help on, on several things, and it's like they just get pushed to the curb, it took us six months to even get an answer back, and I understand the COVID nineteen stuff, but, um, it's, it's not going to hurt them by us not doing it, it's not, they're not helping, um, I, I think this is an opportunity for us to open up the doors and say, hey, you know, I'm, we're going to have to work closely together, you know, you want some stuff like this.
I agree.
Yeah, I mean, we've asked for, for several things, I mean, as far as the sewer going over there, as far as the water rates, as far as, I mean, the, the court system, and it's like, Big Brother just almost known over town, but yet they need us, and we do a lot of stuff for the Lake Rerealization Project, which is, I know it's not part of the city, but, you know, we carry that banking off with them, I mean, it's like, we're constantly given, and, 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 you know, when, when do we receive some benefit after that?
Okay, yeah.
That makes a lot of sense. I thought about that with the court thing too, when I first read this, like, cut it down before, but now, now we can get your back and all this.
Yeah, I mean, I, I live in our letters, not going to make a difference to you away, but it's, you know, it's a two-way street, we want to be good neighbors to them, but we also have to do the same thing with that.
Correct. What does that leave us with that, if we ask them, like, well, could you help us out on some things?
I can, I can explain our situation to them, see if they were willing to do anything, or we can just.
On some of this is that they probably don't care, or they can take your leave at what we think, but I'd appreciate it if we did, but.
Yeah.
But they did an April point, it's strong, because we're always going to have that with them, and like Corey said, it is a two-way street, and we didn't ask for a lot.
Yeah.
Especially with the court system, they were going to benefit all from it, and so you're just like, just, you know, help us out a little bit.
Yep.
And I, you know, maybe, like, you know, maybe it's just us, open, it allows us for a discussion between them, you know, to say, hey, look, you know, we obviously want to help you out, but, you know, we want to be good neighbors, but again, you don't have to return some of that papers, just, and not return papers, but just, I mean, let's work together.
So what I'm here to say is, more or less table it, or we reach out to them, see if they're willing to do anything for us, or just say, hey, we'll sign it when you're willing to do something for us?
Me personally, I think, I'm good signing it, but I think it opens up the door to say, hey, you know, we're willing to do this, but, you know, what do we have to do to, to work and have a better working relationship with you guys? That's just my personal opinion, I think, I think, I think it just gives us an opportunity to let, you know, have a little bit of leverage and say, look, we're willing to do this, but, you know, we need some help from you guys too.
I was wondering about that, and it's a Wichita question, I watched a lot on these, they're wanting to take the land and do the, the lake project, but didn't the reverse osmosis that ran at the area, is that not keeping up with?
No, no, I'm not the reverse osmosis, the, uh, reclaimed water.
They had reclaimed water, yeah.
They did, and so I, I know that it's helping out a bit, because I've seen the reports in it, I know it's helping out, um, I think this is just one of those, like Brad said, it's a, it's a twenty-year project.
Back to the plan. I thought I read somewhere where Fort Worth was going to jump in on that re, re Lake Ringel bill too.
I thought they backed down, because they built a new lake someplace here.
Didn't they, okay.
Lake Ringel's been happening for four years.
Oh, yeah, it may not, I've heard of it, well, I'm proud of it, I'm anyway.
I mean, and it's not happened yet.
It's Dallas County, it's trying.
Dallas County trying to get into.
So maybe just hold this off, unless they come back and are like more adamant about it, and we'll say, hey.
Let's talk about it.
Yeah, okay.
If they want to come, if they want to come talk to us or present something to us.
I'll let, I'll let y'all make it, so just do it that way, so don't, I don't need anything, if y'all don't have to go on, I just needed a motion if y'all want me to sign it, it's perfect.
All right, brings us to seven F, discussion and consideration on NFIP requests to adopt and enforce flood, flood damage prevention ordinance, FPPO, that applies to least sixty dot three C, in reversal, Arge County, new FIS and FIR.
Yeah, so the FIS is the flood insurance system, and the FIR is the flood insurance rate map, this is something, um, out of the DR forty-four sixteen, the heavy floods, um, I know Shane Wright had a lot to do with this, and, uh, they hired a firm to write a whole new thing for Archer County, um, and so all this is doing is, um, if we approve this ordinance, they need this, so we, we can stay compliant with them and stay part of it, if there's ever another flood or something like that, this gives us more monies to come back in and say, hey, we're part of it, we have an ordinance, allows us future funding.
Does it do anything to lower our insurance rate?
No, we've asked that, it doesn't, unless you live in a flood plain, none of these houses in Lake Side City, besides, I think Mr. Stone was real close to it, lives in a flood plain, but other than that, there's a, we have a big flood insurance rate map, there's no homes, I think, I, I think that, like, I think there's one back there in the Lands End, maybe, that's close to it, but other than that.
That's why I had to pay flood insurance on mine.
I think that's an option, if we, you know, have to do.
I think mortgage requirement, because that back up to the way.
Really? Okay.
It's like six hundred dollars a year.
Well, and the flood insurance rate map, the UBS.
Flood insurance? No, I started saying that lake's gone down a long way.
Oh, yeah, it would have to, yeah, forever.
Yeah.
I mean. I'm trying to mortgages.
Yeah.
Yeah.
He's running out both overflows.
Close to, we're using it, it's twenty-five feet of land.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's, it's, I think in years past, that house may have flooded, the jury. Oh, yeah, it used to get completely up to our house before they dropped the lake, I knew. We visit that, yeah.
What do you need from us?
I just need a motion, uh, approving the ordinance.
I'll make that motion, as presented.
The flood damage prevention ordinance.
Senator makes the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Discussion between council? No makes any issues with me. I'll call for the vote, all of the bearers say aye.
Aye.
Both say no. Motion passes, brings us to, we run agenda G, seven seventeen, discussion and consideration on appointment of the emergency management coordinator.
Uh, yeah, so, right now, the default emergency management coordinator for the City of Lake Side City is the mayor, that's Corey, um, he has the ability to appoint other people, um, if something necessary, Mr. Johnson's, who reached out to me, uh, said he would be interested in doing it, uh, we went to lunch together, had a very extensive talk, um, he had a lot of good things to say, um, and I know me and Corey had, uh, communicated too about some of the stuff, this is something, there's no funds or funding set aside for this, there's zero dollars out of our budget, um, to give him, so he's operating on a zero dollar budget, um, but he had a lot of good ideas, um, and stuff like that, um, that I never would have thought of, um, I know, I think the chief can attest to this, um, his grant riding skills are very, uh, superb, and so there's a lot of opportunities there for us, um, in grants, whether it be, um, outdoor warning system, um, And so there's a lot of opportunities there for us in grants, whether it be outdoor warning system, funds to find other exits for emergencies within Lake City, because we're one way in, one way out, and that was one of the ideas he had. And so a lot of educational stuff too, so this is y'all's chance to discuss it. He is on the list as part of the presenters, so if y'all want to ask him any questions, John, if you want to step up to the podium.
John, I know we've had many conversations and I know this kind of council has too, but if you could just kind of give us a three, three minute little history, kind of what your goals are, what you kind of presented to us, just for the rest of the council and citizens of Lake City here.
Okay. Um, so I'm looking at a couple of different educational programs right off the bat. The first one's called Firewise, and that's actually a program that helps mitigate wildfire damage inside of Lakeside City. Lakeside City obviously doesn't have really an exposure problem, however, it's got an ember problem. With the amount of fields and, and land surrounding Lakeside City, those are all ember generators when you have wildfire. So that's kind of an education program where I've actually been federally certified to come in and take a look at somebody's house and say, these are improvements that you can make to, to make yourself a little bit more resilient against wildfire. The program also is a, you can actually form a committee, a city committee, and, and actually group recognized nationally, there's some grant money and stuff like that, and you get to put a little sign on your, on your, blow your Lakeside City sign, that you're Firewise community. That's also in cooperation with Texas A and M Forest Service. Ready, Set, Go is another program. Ready, Set, Go is, is leans towards wildfire evacuation in the event that a wildfire should threaten Lakeside City. It gives citizens a way to, to kind of gather all their stuff and evacuate in a timely manner. I also see that as a way to adapt Ready, Set, Go, not only for wildfire, but also for other emergencies. If we had part of Lakeside City get affected by tornado, we want to get people out because we, if we have power issues. If we should happen to have a big time hazardous materials incident, say example, at the highway seventy nine stop, then maybe we need to look at evacuating part of Lakeside City that way. Ready, Set, Go is just a good program to use as a groundwork for that, so that's another educational program. And these are things that we can educate through using the fire department as an outreach program, kind of, I'd like to see the position, the emergency manager position, be a, a great bridge between the fire department and the city. Just kind of strengthen that partnership between the two entities. I'd also like to, to see if I'll try to apply for some grants, maybe get an outdoor warning system set up for the city. You know, commonly, you know, commonly known as tornado sirens, but in the industry, they're known as outdoor warning systems, because they're not only used for tornado sirens, but they're also used to inform the public of, of other instances that we need to inform them about. So there is some grant money out there, there's, there's some FEMA money. And just like you said, the education's a big thing, getting out amongst the community and, and just so they can see that the city and the fire department is, is working for them in every aspect of it possible.
If I can add, I will say this is something I did discuss with Chief Lonnie Herr, and he is in grants and support of this. This is not saying that John Schiskey will be in charge of any kind of emergency thing. Chief Lonnie Herr will still be the go-to person and everything. Like I said, he was just more support for the fire department and for the community and for the city too.
The example that I would give is normally I would probably be at an incident or a large scale incident for the fire department, just because I can participate. And in that case, then I can back away from the fire department and look at chief and say, chief, what do you need from an emergency management aspect? So that at that point, I can be kind of dual role and be able to provide assets and resources right on the spot, as opposed to chief having to give a phone call or try and get ahold of somebody or work, work different avenues himself. I can be the point of contact that's actually on the ground at the time of the incident.
You get to attend those food classes, like the four hundred.
I've already done those, sir. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Going back to the grants real quick, I want to touch base on that, because that, that's not gonna be based on our rate, our, our capital here, right? Like normally, and then those are all grants that are just federally funded, so it's not gonna be.
Money out there, yep, it's just waiting to get the density back.
And past we talked about grants, we're always talking about how we can't give them because our, we don't make too much money, our, our homes are due, so just want to make sure that, that's the difference, it's, it's not related to our.
It would fall along the line, same lines as Eric defined for that generator grant, that, you know, we, we had a shot at it, but unfortunately, it was psyched and almost that fangs, and it's probably gonna be like that for a minute, but we have to get our names out there and we need to put on boards.
And we also, him and I also discussed, anything that he does apply for would have to be approved by us, it's not something he can just do on his own, it'd have to be city approved, city council approved, and have y'all's blessing on it before we proceed forward with it.
Any questions from council? With council's support, I would like to appoint. Mr. John Schiskey as the emergency, emergency manager coordinator. Any motion on that?
Make that motion.
Mr. Gabriel makes the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Gabriel seconds it, all the bares say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion passes.
You can't look quite at the reserve, let's go.
Archer City on the street, it was on a truck and it blew up. Uh, we'll go to number eight, other council matters. Start. Can we go back here?
I, I don't have anything.
I do not have anything.
Brother.
No.
Yeah, one thing I forgot to add earlier, in regards to septic inspection of the sewer task force. One of the things that we're really realizing, there's a real big lack of education on citizens and septic tanks and their knowledge of them. And one of the things that we're looking at doing is, once we have the new building, we have a big huge meeting facility, start doing, I would like to do monthly, I don't know how feasible that is, at least quarterly, education things for citizens to come to and participate. We would just sort of give a instructional type thing on, here's your septic tank, this is how it works, this is how it happens, and then stuff that you can do to prolong the maintenance and stuff like that. So that's something we're looking at starting when we get in our new building, let's add that.
So I would ask that maybe come up with a date that we can also advertise at our open house, a grand opening type deal that maybe says for something, February, I think, or at least probably better to start off with. Even if it's like a welcome to Lakeside City for all the new residents to come, or for current residents, and you can get all different things, have the fire department set up so they can kind of get volunteers and have different aspects of what all lakes in the city come through.
Let's get it, it's.
Uh, that's all I had.
Oh, they weren't asking, what we got on the sandblasting plugs?
So he came back and the bid was, he will charge us thirty dollars per fireplug to, he, he went back and we sandblasted this one up there, and it took a little bit more time, he looked, it was a lot more. Then now you gotta come back and prime it and all that, looked at a few other things. His recommendation now is to come back and power wash them, and then come in and then prime and paint them. And so he's saying the bid for that, it's thirty dollars per plug, to power wash, and then for him to paint it, we would provide the paint and the color.
That's him sandblasting them?
Power washing, not sandblasting. It's a little bit more if you sandblasting, the only thing about sandblasting was, it takes us all the way down to the bare metal, and then you gotta prime them and then paint them. Power washing just gets all the dirt and the loose paint off of it, some of the paint's already stuck on there pretty good, and so that way, it's just power washing it, get the, the dirt, the loose paint, and then come back and paint it.
What was, what was it, five grand, and then sandblasting, and then we got the prime?
The only thing with sandblasting, having to get down below and get up and just, a little bit more cumbersome, but that's something y'all want.
You don't have to do all that though.
Yeah.
Like that one I first, still missing up underneath it, it looks fine.
Yeah. If y'all want sandblasting, that's something we can ask, it was just, his offer was it's cheaper and quicker for him just to power wash them, do a good power wash, and then top coat them, whatever color we want.
Man, at that point, I think power washing and this painting, is that something Don could do?
Yeah.
I mean, you know, I mean, instead of painting my thirty bucks or a painting, I mean, there's already a little, there was this power wash, but I, I do like sandblasting, I think it's kind of getting down to the, getting one coat on there, one good coat.
We spent the money, I mean, or the, the money was in the budget.
Okay.
So thank you.
Proceed forward with.
That's, the sandblasting, prime, the paint?
That's correct.
Hey, he'll, he'll do it, no wonder, I mean. That's my, that's my vote.
Yeah, okay.
Get them cleaned up, just make them look good.
Okay.
That was already budgeted out, correct?
And then, obviously, this, just to clarify, we're gonna do, there's no thing saying it has to be a certain color, I checked with the, everybody.
And F B A is just.
Recommendation.
That's not a, it's not a law, and we don't have time to get into why we don't.
Yeah, no, I totally agree, I totally agree.
We don't need colors.
There's just red ones out there already in the field, so.
In most cities, you're getting away from that.
Yeah, I agree.
Should we paint them red?
Paint them red.
The only thing I have is that I'd like to, where are we having the bricks?
Oh, yeah.
Pressed bricks.
Uh, so they just sent in a great request, Lake Westfall reservoir for nine hundred and forty five dollars, not from us, it doesn't come out of our funds, it comes out of their funds, just sent to Jim Hallett, the press third block, for them to, it's not equipped by for them to make tender silk bricks that he's gonna bring back. And see, I, all the sediment and stuff that we funded came back, we think, so now they're gonna make the actual bricks.
So, so the test results came back, it could be viable?
Could be a viable source, now they just gotta make the brick, and then split the brick through. Those testing.
Have they hired a new steward? Are they?
No, they're not gonna hire a steward, or a new executive director, no. David Coleman is the chairman of, of the, of the Lake Westfall Committee, and he's the one that's sort of inherited, and he's doing a free charge.
Do you think it's possible to get like quarterly updates from them?
Yes.
I mean, even if it's just a letter to us.
Yeah, and the fact that you brought that up, John Pazzano had, he was one of the designated people on the committee, he had resigned due to, I'm having another job that took too much time. Pete Gill's the only other one from Lake City, so the city of Westfall is taking applications right now for that. Y'all know anybody that would be interested in sitting on that committee, please sit on my way, I can get them in contact with Marie at City of Westfall for the application they're gonna fill out, and then their city council has to approve, you know, as a voting meeting.
I don't have anything else, I'm going to attend the motion, is there?
Corey? Sorry, I apologize, I forgot one thing. I finally got home to ISO guy, I haven't played phone tag in two weeks, I'm gonna call him back Thursday, when we try to set up a point where he comes in, after we're in the building, we're established, and we're running pretty good. He'll come in, say it's springtime, and we'll do our ISO autopsy.
Okay.
So if you can get home by Thursday, get it set up, every time I call him, he's just gonna put it on, drive him out of road.
Well, that's actually, thanks a lot.
Same kind of motion.
Make the motion again.
Senator makes the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Scarborough seconds it, discussion between council, all the bares say aye. Opposed say no. Motion passes.